Final annexation vote this evening. To go along with the annexation, if it does become annexed into the city, is the process of designating the piece of property for its appropriate zone. The Planning Commission has put forward that it should be zoned R1. And per ORC, we need to have a public hearing about the zoning designation, which this is. So if anybody has any concerns, comments, avocation about this process, or about this zoning designation, please come up, sign in, and let us know.
Could you tell us? Oh, the mayor's question.
Oh, just to add to it, it's about two acres, a little over two acres. It's on the south side of town off of Old Palmeroy Road. Again, a desire is to be annexed in from Mrs. Sturbois, I believe. It's off of Ridgeview Drive and Cannon Road 33A. So, and everybody sign in the sheet when you get a chance because you're part of the public.
Okay. Any concerns or comments?
Just a comment, you might want to explain to our guests what ORC is.
Oh, sorry, Ohio Revised Code. The bible of what we do. So, there's certain processes that we have to do. Having a public hearing about zoning is one of them.
So, you're recommending R1?
Yes, and the Planning Commission has put forward the R1 zone, and we will hear the third reading of it tonight.
And so, we will close this public hearing?
Okay.
Did Law Director Lang have anything to say there? No? Okay. We will close the public hearing and move into the regular agenda for this evening. This is a regular council meeting where we deal with several ordinances. We do have a forum of all council members present, and the first business item is disposition of some minutes. We have a request to accept the regular session, the minutes of the regular session which was held on October 7th, 2013.
I move that we accept the minutes, October 7th, 2013.
Second.
All those in favor of accepting the minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The minutes of October 7th are accepted. Communications from other officials. Mayor Wile?
Let's see, a couple things. I was reminded by one of the council members that the, we're going to have an Oxbow Bridge dedication, this is Richland Avenue, October 28th, at noon, probably below, at the bottom part of the bridge. I have modified my press conference, which is normally on Wednesday at 2:00 PM, to be tomorrow at 2:00 PM to cover the Halloween event. I plan to have the chief file there, as well as a member of the Safe and Clean Halloween Committee. With respect to that, of course, is that we always are accepting volunteers for the safety teams, Halloween safety teams, as usual. Contact Ron Lucas if you want to join, I think it starts at 7:00. We have a good time just getting everybody orientated for where Halloween is and how the city works. And that's really all I have that I can think of.
Mayor, it's, the university is putting forth some volunteers also, but this is separate. These are citizens of Athens.
These are city, yes. They have their green jackets, they usually, that's what they call them at least, they usually have a group of them patrolling in the campus area, as well as outside the campus area. I've seen them on Mill Street and all the greens. We usually patrol the uptown area, around the, circulate around the outside of Court Street. Most of the activity is, of course, is to let people know if they don't know where things are. In many cases, they can't find where their cars are, where they park things are, or the name of the streets, what they're looking for. Other times, we act as a liaison, so they don't get themselves in trouble, sometimes parental-like, but without a badge and a ticket. I think that covers it really, also, next week, of course, we'll also have the Uptown Business Association Halloween. I believe that's the 28th in the evening, 5:30 to 6:30 or 7:00, I think. Usually it runs a little bit longer. We have Court Street will be closed at that time, parking will be free at the parking garage. I think you guys enacted that. I couldn't tell you what the ordinance is offhand, but one of you might. Let's see, and the regular, streetwide, citywide trick or treat is going to be the Thursday of 31st, but that's, that's not, that's next week. We'll be meeting again for it, I'm sure.
Attorney.
Yes, I'll try to keep this brief, but I just handed out three sheets to each of you. One is a draft debt schedule for next year. You know, I've handed these out regularly for years. It's important to look at it. There's some good things going on, although we continually take on debt for new projects. We retired one of our sewer debts this summer, and in 2016, we'll retire two more. Most likely, we will pay off the East State Street note next year with our tip money. We've been paying $250,000 on that for several years, and that's what we owe now, so hopefully that will go. We'll be paying down on the ladder truck here soon, which is on the agenda for tonight. The other two papers, two things, an update on our CCA collections, pretty straightforward. We've collected almost $200,000 from CCA this year. In-house collections this year are $82,000, for a total of $273,000 for this year.
Attorney. Could you explain what CCA is?
Oh, yeah, our central collection agency that we've contracted with, which is actually the City of Cleveland, who has access to IRS tax returns that we do not, and they have been working with people who, most of them didn't realize that we had a local income tax that they needed to be paying. And what has happened, why we have in-house collections, is the letters sent out beginning early this year were for the years 2006 through 2010. But once people realized they should have been paying for those years, several of them, quite a few of them came in and paid for 11 and 12 in our office, so that they could be caught up moving forward. So that's $82,000 from that, and so, we have a total of 100, well, actually, a total of 200 new taxpayer accounts from all of these together, some from CCA and some through people who came in and heard about it and decided to pay. So, Tina also added the amnesty collection on there, just to remind you that we got over $50,000 last year when we ran that. So our total collections are $325,000. One reason I wanted to report on that tonight is I also handed you an income tax projection. Now that we're three quarters of the way through the year, I wanted you to see where we are in our collections, and we are really right on target, you know, very, very close to 75% of what we projected. And the only other thing I want to point out on that, well, maybe two things, you can see, we do have an additional fund on there getting money, the Transportation Fund 214. And the main thing I want to point out is that while we are up $309,000 from our projections, that, you know, $273,000 of that is from, through CCA collections. So our actual tax revenue would not be where it is now without that. I just think it's something we're going to have to look at next year. While we have all these 200 new accounts, moving forward, we won't get the bump in five years' worth of taxes, you know, at a time from most of them. So, just information for you to, sure.
And the, the cost of CCA is what, 3%?
Three to five, depending on what it actually costs them, so I would just say 5%.
That's a super small amount, okay.
Yeah, it depends on what they bring in, and, you know, the time, they have percentages they use per account, and by the amounts, not to be over 5%.
Yeah, okay. Okay, yes.
So that's not included in the 325,000?
Yes, it is. What we've actually collected is what they're, just like, you know, the county and the state, they take their administrative fees off the top. So what we show on there is what we collected includes what, you know, they've taken their administrative fee off the top.
If we didn't collect it, they wouldn't get it, but we wouldn't get the law.
Right, right. We would have no way of finding people, we don't have access to those records. Even our income tax records are highly confidential, and so are the IRS records, obviously.
And there's nothing special about the City of Cleveland. It's just they have-
Their population. Their population has allowed them, if you have a population over 250,000 people, then you can apply for this access. And, of course, they had to, you know, go into special buildings, have their own floors, it's not mixed in with any of their other operations. You have to have special, you know, cards or keys or whatever to get admittance, and, you know, not anybody is just allowed to go up there and go through there. So it's, it's a pretty strict, strictly-run operation.
And if I remember correctly, Tina Timberman's estimate for next year's income would be down from this $273,000 down to about $50,000 next year in the CCA income.
Looking at the debt, the, how do you think the exciting extravaganza this last few weeks is going to affect the interest rates that we may be looking at from this point forward?
Well, that's a good question. It's kind of hard to say. Our community center bond and our OWDA notes are set amounts, those don't change. As you know, we have a local bank that we get a very, very, very good interest rate with, which we will get again. As, like I said, we'll be talking about two notes that we have due in December. I've already been told that that interest rate will be low. Moving forward, any new loans that we get outside of our local loans, I'm just not sure. I mean, I don't know. Stock market went down right away, as it, you know, did 15 years ago, or whenever, and, but then it bounced back, so in the long term, I'm just not sure. In a lot of ways, Athens is insulated from a lot of things like that. We just, we have a steady revenue stream that's pretty strong and continue to move forward. Although, as I said, our income tax revenue, you know, we'll have to be more careful next year.
But if, if we're looking at potentially higher interest rates on the amount of money that we do tend to, you know, have-
Oh, absolutely. Our ability to get these, to have the credit rating that we do, and to get the interest rates that we do, is huge.
Right, so that, that could potentially affect the whole budget, so.
Oh, sure. You're exactly right.
A local effect from stuff that goes on outside our control.
Oh, yes. I, I expect them to go up because of that. How drastically, I don't know, but, yeah.
And it's time of year, because we will be talking about it.
Exactly. Hey, I think that's it for me, unless you have any more questions.
Law Director Lang?
No report.
No report? Okay, we're going to move on to ordinances for third reading. Ordinance 11313, an ordinance granting the renewal of a revocable license to John Wharton, owner, 70 North High Street, to allow a fence on the city right-of-way. Number four.
Thank you. I move that we adopt 11313.
Second.
This is a, so it's a, it's for 10 years. Pretty straightforward.
All those in favor of adoption of ordinance 11313 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The ordinance is adopted. Ordinance 11413, an ordinance granting variances from the Athens City subdivision regulations for two parcels located within the three-mile limit at 63 East First Street, the Plains, Ohio, to allow a minor lot split. Number four.
Thank you. I move that we adopt 11413.
Second.
Because this is within our three-mile planning limit, we do have some say about what goes on when it comes to our subdivision regulations. These, this one parcel would like to be, owners would like to split it into two. The variance was that it did not meet the depth-to-width ratio. However, this went through all the proper channels and has been signed off by all the people that might need to sign it off. Pretty straightforward.
All those in favor of ordinance 11413 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. This ordinance is adopted. Ordinance 11513, an ordinance accepting the petition for annexation of approximately 2.037 acres located at 2 Ridgeview Drive. Number four.
Mr. President, I move that we adopt 11513.
Second.
This particular ordinance, though we did not table it or anything, had some questions about it concerning the parcels need to be contiguous with other parts of the city in order to be annexed. There was some question about whether the road was county or city, and Law Director Lang has the answers.
Yeah, thank you, Member Four. We've had an opportunity to look at the legal descriptions on these lots, and basically, the confusion stemmed from some maps that we were looking at, particularly maps that were on file at the county auditor's office, which seemed to indicate that the parcels may not be contiguous. However, when looking at the legal descriptions, it's clear that both parcels of property are orienting themselves toward the same point, toward the same pin in the ground there, and that, and that they are in fact contiguous, so it is entirely appropriate for annexation.
Great, thank you. That just says to, to me that one always has to watch your maps and always back them up, because sometimes map drawers-
Yeah, we've recommended that they may want to correct the maps on them.
Okay. So, the, we've, the Planning Commission has signed off on this, and it's, it seems an appropriate way of dealing with this annexation.
Can you add a comment? All those in favor of ordinance 11513 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Ordinance 11513 is adopted. And now we're on to ordinance 11613, an ordinance designating the zone for the annexation area proposed at 2 Ridgeview Drive. Number four.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that we adopt 11613.
Second.
All the exciting ones to me. Now that our city has been expanded by this annexation that we just passed, we need to designate the zone for it. It has been recommended by the Planning Commission that 2 Ridgeview Drive be zoned R1.
Which is?
We've had our residential, single-family residential, no apartments, condos, anything. So, straightforward zoning, all the surrounding zoning is also R1, so. And we had our public hearing as mandated by the Ohio Revised Code, the ORC, so I recommend that we pass this.
Comments? Okay. All those in favor of ordinance 11613 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. This ordinance is adopted. We'll move on quickly to ordinances for second reading. Ordinance 12213, an ordinance amending the 2013 appropriation ordinance. Introduced by Councilmember Nysley, did you have anything to say at this point?
Yes, Mr. President, I move to suspend the rules on ordinance 12213.
Second.
The reason being that there are several expenses for this that are for safety equipment and also supplies, equipment for the police department between now and the end of the year.
All those in favor of amending the rules for ordinance 12213 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The rules are suspended.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move adoption of ordinance 12213.
Second.
This particular ordinance has several sections to it. We discussed it last week at the first reading. These are for supplies that are needed in different departments across the city between now and the end of the year. $15,000 would be needed at the community center, and these are for custodial, childcare, maintenance supplies, and also some expenses for natural gas and heating. The second expense is $15,000 for the purchase of safety supplies. This will include a panic button at the community center, that, that particular facility doesn't have a panic button right now. The other thing that will be purchased with this will be an automatic defibrillator for the law administration building, they don't have that now, and it will also help purchase the paddles and supplies. Then the last section is $10,000 that's being made in a transfer from the general fund parking enforcement within the police department, and it's, so that decrease of $10,000 is being made from parking enforcement and then transferred over to the general fund police department for some supplies that are needed between now and the end of the year.
Do you want to shake a hand? No?
No.
All those in favor of adoption of ordinance 12213 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. This ordinance is adopted. And now to other business, we've exhausted all of our ordinances. I have two quick things. Number one, just to remind council members that we have a luncheon date with President McDavis at noon in the president's dining room on Tuesday, January 28th. You need to put that on your calendar so that we can all be there. We have, we've adopted a calendar that allows us to have lunch with the university president twice a year. Once he invites us to Usely Baker Center, and another time we take the president out to a restaurant in Athens. But it gives us the chance to talk to him and his administration about things that we don't always get to do. So, on our calendars, we need to mark off Tuesday, January 28th. Also, we need a motion. Law Director Lang has kindly agreed to be our representative at the National League of Cities, which will be held on November 16th, 2013, in Seattle. At this moment, I think that the law director's the only representative we have. We are, we are a city under 1, under 50,000 members, population, and so we are allowed one voting member.
So we need a motion?
We need a motion.
I so move that Law Director Pat Lang is the representative for the City of Athens.
Second.
We're going to adopt this motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign. The appointment is adopted. We have an opportunity now for citizens to speak on any, oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
Oh, I'd like to make a motion to approve the auditor's September-
Go ahead.
Auditor's report.
Did we hear a second?
Second.
Okay, the, the motion now is to adopt the auditor's report for-
September.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The auditor's report for September is adopted. Now we have an opportunity. No, we don't?
Committees?
Oh, committees. Okay. I turned the page too quickly. Other business, okay. We need to, next week, we will be having committee meetings. Do we have any committees that know that they need to talk to? Planning and Development?
Finance and Personnel?
Can only guess.
Let's put transportation.
Okay. So we have three that we know of. Other committees, I can certainly talk to the clerk of counsel and add their members to the, to the agenda, which will be 7:00 in these chambers next Monday. Now is it opportunity? Now it's opportunity for citizens to speak. I hope somebody's thought of something, no?
So it's tied to plan.
Okay, then we will call this adjourned at 7:40. We'll move on to ordinances for first reading. Ordinance 12313, an ordinance amending the 2013 appropriation ordinance, introduced by Councilmember Nysley.
Thank you, Mr. President. These are some additional expenses that we will have between now and the end of the year, and then the other categories of expenses also include paying down of the notes that the auditor mentioned a few moments ago in her report, and then also will be decreasing the appropriation and the general fund for the court. So I'll go through the amounts on each of those different, those three areas. Section one, for the general fund, we have $38,000 additional in lands and building for street lighting. Then the next two are for paying down notes. $25,000 will be paid from the general fund to pay down our note on our ladder truck. You might remember, this is a five-year paydown that we have on this, with an annual contribution made by Ohio University. That, their contribution has been made this year, paid to the city, and now this $25,000 are the city funds that will be committed to paying down that loan right now. $53,000 we're paying down on the sewer debt fund. This is an $800,000 worth of improvements for the wastewater treatment plant, and $50,000 of that is paying down on the principal, and then $3,000 of that is interest, so that's $53,000 total. And then the last section has to do with decreasing the general fund appropriation for the court. It is currently at more than $200,000. We're going to be decreasing that amount by their amount in the court, court fund by $200,000. This is more an auditor recommendation that you don't want to sit with a large unappropriated balance in the court fund. These are funds that they've been very careful with their money during the year, and so we're going to unappropriate them.
Moving on to ordinance 12413, ordinance amending ordinance 9713, authorizing the service safety director to advertise and accept bids where necessary, excuse me, where necessary, and to enter into contracts for the university estates' street improvements, project number 265, and declaring an emergency. Member Nysley.
Thank you, Mr. President. The university estates' project for improving the roads has been, has been something that we've been talking about probably since March or April, and with the help of several council members and discussions with the neighborhood associations and, and the citizens bringing a petition forward, and city administration working, we were able to work out a process, an assessment process, and then also able to complete the repairs. And we just now received the final costs for that, and we had originally appropriated $515,000. So what this appropriation ordinance does tonight is increases it to the amount of the final cost that we now have. So it went from $515,000 to $532,722. And given the scope and size of the project, I mean, I think that's- And given the scope and size of the project, I think that's a fairly modest increase in the total final cost, and just appreciate everything the administration's done to make this possible this year. We're going into a winter season where there won't be nearly as many holes. The University Estates' roads look very nice.
I do.
Many of us have been up there to see it. Councilmember Butler.
Thank you, Member Nysley. Correct me if I'm wrong, I think our earlier estimate initially was over $700,000, is that correct?
We, the auditor recommended authorization up to $720,000 because we weren't quite positive how much the total cost would be, so nice to see it come, come in below that mark.
Agreed.
The street department, who was, who was in charge of this, made some changes in the process. They used some of the, reused some of the blacktop and was able to recognize significant savings.
And I think what happened then in the final project was that where they thought they could grind a fair amount down, they realized there wasn't as much that they could, and so they had to use a little bit more new materials, yeah, because of the subways. Yes, auditor.
Just so everybody knows, that we did receive money back from the bond company that counts towards this. We have to have the full appropriation, this is what we're spending, but we received about $55,000 from the company that the administration contacted to say, hey, you know, where are we? And we have already gotten that money, so, so we're spending this, but that amount was reimbursed to us already.
Yeah, so thanks for negotiating that, and I think the law director was helping us in that also, so thank you, helping with this.
Moving on to ordinance 12513, an ordinance approving the report of the Assessment Equalization Board with respect to objections concerning the estimated assessments for sidewalk improvements associated with the Columbus Road-North Lancaster Street infrastructure improvements, and declaring an emergency. Member Nysley.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Assessment Equalization Board and members from city staff met on October 8th, and the minutes of that assessment meeting were shared with city council members. There were two citizens who requested a hearing about the amount of money that had been assessed for their particular sidewalk repairs. Those appeals of sorts were reviewed by a three-member volunteer citizen board who looked at the maps, looked at the correspondence that had gone on, that had been sent to the property owners, and looked also at photos, and then made a decision on this. So we, we have the recommendations of that assessment board, and just want to take a moment also to thank those three citizens who took the time to spend several hours with the city staff sifting through the details and the documents to make the recommendations. I think that was David Discutner, John Garsky, and Sharon Hughay, who helped us with this process.
Ordinance, excuse me, do you need to suspend that?
We do.
Okay. We hear.
I move to suspend because the project has been finished.
Second.
We are asking to suspend the rules. Tell me again.
The reason is, is that the sidewalk assessment board has met, and the project is nearing completion within the next few weeks, and so we need to pay the bills on this.
And so, we have a, did we have a second? All those in favor of adopting ordinance 12513, all those in favor of suspending the rules on ordinance 12513 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Okay, the rules have been suspended.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that we approve ordinance 12413, excuse me, 12513.
Second.
For all the reasons we talked.
Right.
I just, I would like to echo Member Nysley's thank you to the members of the, of the community who served on that board. I read through the minutes, and it was very detailed when assisting the two who came forward with, with question about the improvements that are needed in the city. But again, it's a, it's a lot of work that goes into being on one of these boards.
Yes, Councilmember.
Thank you, Debbie, as well, for the minutes and taking the time to get those to us. They were very detailed, and it was very helpful to reread and then look at the discussion and the issues that were at hand.
Rules have been suspended. Now we're asking for adoption of ordinance 12513. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The ordinance is adopted. Move on to ordinance 12613, an ordinance determining to proceed with sidewalk improvements associated with the Columbus Road-North Lancaster Street infrastructure improvements project, as described in resolution R1013, and declaring an emergency. Member Nysley.
Thank you, I move to suspend this ordinance as well.
Second.
And the reason being that this is also associated with the assessment of the sidewalk improvements on Lancaster Street, and the project is nearing completion.
We are voting on suspending the rules for ordinance 12613. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Member Nysley, the rules have been suspended.
Thank you, Mr. President, I move to adopt 12613.
Second.
And this particular ordinance then enables the city to declare the necessity for these sidewalk improvements and to move forward then with completion of the repairs. And this is the Columbus Road-North Lancaster Street infrastructure. So many of you have likely seen this, and you're driving about the city where it goes from Mound Street and the, and the improvements began, and the side, many of the sidewalks are being repaired in that area.
As well as the street. Member Butler?
As well as the water line underneath, is that correct?
Water, water, sewer, curb, sidewalk, some of the areas around the fire hydrants as well.
But this is, that's the assessment for the sidewalks in particular.
Correct.
And again, there, there are mechanisms like University Estates to assess for the street project as well, and infrastructure underneath, but very seldom do we pull that trigger. Again, Ohio Revised Code, if you read the ordinance, it has a prescribed methodology for doing this. It's not like we can just go willy-nilly and do it. So, we do it, there's a lot of work, deliberation, and as you say, citizen input, if there's a contesting of the assessment. So it's a process, it's a...
The rules have been suspended on ordinance 12613, and now we're asking for adoption of the ordinance. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Ordinance 12613 is adopted. Moving on to ordinance 12713, an ordinance authorizing the auditor to reduce 2013 year-end appropriations. Introduced by the Finance and Personnel Committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is an annual ordinance that is introduced, and what it does is puts our appropriations in line so that we're not overspending our money. We're taking into account our receipts and making any adjustments needed in the appropriations between now and the end of the year.
This was requested by the auditor several years ago, and rather than go through each account in December and try to get an ordinance passed for specific amounts, we've been passing a general ordinance allowing my office to go ahead and reduce the appropriations as needed. What it really applies to is the idea that when we project revenue in the beginning of the year, it's a projection, it's an educated guess, and sometimes it doesn't come in as high as we want it to or projected, and so we can't have appropriations on the books showing that we might overspend on what we don't have. We never have overspent what our actual revenue was, but it's, it's a bookkeeping issue that the auditors want to make sure is clean.
Ordinance 12813, an ordinance amending ordinance 7313, declaring certain police department firearms no longer needed for municipal purpose, and declaring an emergency. Introduced by Member Butler.
Thank you, Mr. President. I believe if I'm correct in understanding, that we should request suspension of the rules because, as indicated in an email from Captain Harvey that was forwarded, there's changes to the serial number, and then three other firearms are added to the list, and this would help the trade-in process that we already approved, I believe over the summer, is that correct? So, I'm kindly requesting suspension of the rules.
Second.
We have a request to suspend the rules on ordinance 12813. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Member Butler, the rules have been suspended.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to adopt ordinance 12813.
Second.
This particular ordinance, as I alluded to seconds ago, is, is passed over the course of the summer, and is an attempt by the police department to dispose of ethically, we have 55 firearms, so we're amending the ordinance because it originally read 52, and there was a correction on a serial number. Thank you, Mr. President.
I have a question. Member Butler, so here in the listing, it also talks about total cost for new firearms and difference needed. Is that something that is part of this, or is that a separate issue from the ordinance?
I might check with the mayor. Thank you.
That was part of the previous ordinance. If this is actually, it's like, we're doing trade-ins actually.
Right.
Are you expecting, I don't think the cost is that much different, so I mean, if I'm looking at the included weapons there, we're talking about $175 difference.
Right.
In terms of trade-in value. And I believe the, I think the baby eagle right there, I think he said the serial number was a mistake, one number, it was a typo at that point, so he wanted to correct that for the record.
Mm-hmm.
Again, it's a trade-in of the armaments within the police force, as well as, I believe, weapons that were left as evidence that we're just getting rid of. But I understand the, the, the sales representative came through and they were going through the inventory and realized there was a difference, there were more there than they thought. So, as I say, trade-in value is not that significant difference. I'm trying to remember the dollar amount, I thought it was like $8,000 that we're going to have to come up with.
So, $7,900?
Something of that nature.
Yeah, difference. Okay.
So we only, an additional $75 onto that total.
Thank you.
Seventy-nine, okay, so you've adjusted the total above that?
Okay, thank you.
And so, just for our audience here as well, when these firearms are traded in, just so they understand that process, you might want to share that.
Yeah, it's, I was trying to look through my notes to see if I had the information, the process from, that was described by the captain over the course of the summer. I didn't see the information right in front of me, but Steve, were you going to add to that, or did you want to comment on that?
Just, this was mentioned during the initial ordinance reading, in that these, none of these weapons are high-capacity assault weapons of any type. They're sidearms, or they're shotguns that we find that are, think married up with the cruisers themselves, and that the, the trade is, if I'm, if I remember correctly, associated with a company that deals in law enforcement firearms of this type, reputable dealer, but yeah, I think it's out of Cleveland, if I'm not mistaken.
Thank you.
I would also point out this, any type of capital asset requires some active counsel. Remember, when we're getting rid of cars, vehicles, when we're buying, you know, realize when we're buying a ladder truck, we also, you know, have to do an ordinance saying we're getting rid of the ladder truck, too. So this is no different than any other piece of capital asset we have within the city.
Thank you, ma'am.
Right?
Yes, yes. Was there an appropriation in the original ordinance?
I think there was.
For the extra money?
Yes.
I think that's kind of what some, whoever asked the first question was getting at, is that yes, it is going to cost us money, but we think there was an appropriation.
Yeah.
The rules have been suspended, and now we are asking for adoption of ordinance 12813. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The ordinance is adopted.